Because it's so quiet in here, I don't think I need to use the gavel. Once again, we would like to call this meeting to order, and we'd like to welcome everybody that is here in chambers and also participating via the Internet or watching our YouTube channel. Tonight is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kingman City Council, held at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. Turn some time over to our city clerk, Annie Meredith, for roll call.
Mayor Watkins.
Present.
Vice Mayor Samley is excused this evening. Councilmember Dykens.
Here.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker is on Zoom with us. Councilmember Walker. Councilmember Ward.
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you. I would like to, we would like to invite those who would like to participate in our invocation to stand, and that invocation will be given by Pastor Ken Miller of Grace Lutheran Church, after which I have asked Councilman Dykens to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Gracious God, we thank you for all the blessings you shower upon us. Please guide our city council in the decisions they make, support our law enforcement, fire department, and any medical teams that care for our community and serve them, may help, strengthen, and help maintain this community, and be with all the citizens who make Kingman the wonderful community that it is. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Item number one, awards recognition, A, Arizona American Public Works Association Project of the Year Award. The Arizona chapter of the American Public Works Association, APWA, has awarded the city of Kingman with the 2025 Project of the Year Award for Small Cities and Rural Communities for the Beale Street Streetscape Project. This project transformed the historic downtown corridor into a more walkable, accessible, and inviting destination. Welcome, Jack. Glad to have you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for having me tonight. As you just read, the project was awarded the Arizona Small and Rural Cities, or Small and Rural Communities Project of the Year. It's been a huge success, and so I was luckily enough, lucky enough to go accept that award in Tucson and bring it here to present to you guys as your award. It was council that set this up, set the direction, and got this project moving, and so, one, I'd like to congratulate each of you and then give you some hardware while we're here.
Great.
So, thank you.
Jack, well, thank you. I know all of us continue to receive such positive feedback about what has happened in our, on Beale Street. It doesn't matter who we're talking to. I know at the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Conference, a number of people commented, they had had a chance to visit Kingman and drive through, and they saw what we have done with Beale Street, and it's just been an amazing change, and so we appreciate your department and all the work that has been done with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Annie, I suppose you want to take a picture of us? Okay, if we can all get up there and stand with Jack. That's a cool block of wood there, right? Look at that. That is neat.
Pretending I'm tall.
Me too. I always.
Can I keep coming down? Or go on this side? Actually, go on this side between the mayor and Sean. Sorry.
There we go.
Just want to make sure we're even. Go up and then Sean in.
Get even.
Oh, you're up.
Up. You're up, Sean.
That'll work.
You're good.
I'll give you room.
Tighten that room.
Ready? All right, you're ready. Perfect.
I didn't know cassette tapes.
Afterwards, you'll have to all come up and take a look at this. I'll put it up here on the shelf there, anyway. Pretty cool block of wood. Thank you. Item number two, call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda item, on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. We have one citizen would like to share some thoughts. Jeanette Duran. Jeanette, if you'd like to come up.
If I may, can I approach and distribute this?
Sure.
Thank you.
Make sure you give one to our city manager over there, too. The city manager.
As you know, I've, you don't remember, but I doubt that. I've been here to speak before about water usage, and particularly when there's been spills and stuff running down the street, these complexes have had leaks before. What I wanted to tell you was that last year, the city complex, including the fire department at Benelli House and the city complexes across the street county, spent a total of $34,775.23 on their water bills. I know that because I have all the water bills right here. Okay. For that kind of money, really, we could have rock, this is the desert, we could have rock put in, you know, this year it's going to be a lot more money because they raised our water bills. So, my suggestion is that the city council have somebody take bids or whatever to put in a combination of rock, maybe some concrete, around where we have all these lawns and water. On my way here today, I live on Pine Street, I came across Third, and there was water running down the street. So, as my usual thing, I followed it to the source, and a construction on Pine Street, the contractors had a bunch of equipment and locked gate, and there was water coming out there. They must have left the hose on or something, and it was running down Third, across, I don't know, it was going down toward Beale Street, and the thing is, I mean, come on, we don't need these lawns. People out here, this is a desert. We don't need these lawns. They waste a lot of water, and we don't have a lot of water here to waste. I mean, people pray for rain, but we just don't have a lot of water to waste, and I would like to see the city do away with some of these unnecessary plots of lawn. Now, I realize the parks and the schools have to have lawns for their playgrounds, and, you know, the parks all have to have lawns, but, I mean, really, the city complex, the fire department, you know, all these little city complexes, I mean, it looks nice, yeah, but, you know, put in concrete and paint it green, what the heck? I mean, we really don't need all this lawn and all the water that this, lawns are water suckers. There's no two ways about it, and I would appreciate it if you would consider this because I am a water-saving person. I try to, you know, help people save water wherever I can and patch up leaks, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeanette, and of course, our city manager has heard this and our, and our staff, and we will take it under consideration. Item number three, consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Council, have we all had a chance to take a look at our consent agenda and what items would like to be pulled? I know, Councilor Savage, you have a couple that you'd like to pull?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull N and O.
Okay. Items number N and O. Anything else? Councilor Dykens? Or Staley? We're good? Okay.
I had a whole bunch, but I came in and talked to the city manager about them, and I'm trying to remember on one if I need.
We cleared them all up, I think. No, I'm just kidding.
Are we good? Okay. I would like to pull item X for a little bit of discussion, so we will go to those points. Okay, so can we have a motion approving our consent agenda minus items N, O, T, and X?
So moved.
Second. We have motion and second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Councilor Savage, item N.
Yeah, this is going to be kind of two-pronged, so I'll probably need Jack on this. If I can hit them both at once, might save a little time.
Okay.
Concerning N, Jack, the deck, I'm assuming.
Oh, hold on. I'm sorry. Yes. Carl, let me read item N. I apologize. Item N, authorization for Walupi Mountain Bridge deck repairs. This item is for consideration and approval of the attached proposal for repairs to bridge number two on Walupi Mountain Road. The work will be completed under the City of Kingman Job Order Contract, ENG 21-0084. This project was budgeted and approved in the fiscal year 26 budget. The fiscal impact is $100,983.10 plus applicable taxes to be paid from the Capital Projects Fund. Staff recommends approval. Councilor Savage.
Hi, Jack.
And Jack.
Good evening. Question, the deck is the top of the bridge, correct? Correct. Okay, my, my question on this is, why do we not fix that in correlation with the paving we did on Walupi? Would that made it easier getting it done that time? No, not really. It is the same company, but it's actually a different division. We could have tried to do it under that, I'm sorry, under that traffic control, but we actually didn't get the bridge inspection reports until after, and so there was some damaged inbeds and bellows, and so we budgeted for that in this fiscal year, and that's the project we're bringing forth to you. Okay, thank you. That's all I needed.
Well, and Jack, there was some discussion among councilmembers, and I, well, I heard it come up. Clarification, bridge number two is which one? One farther to the?
That's the eastbound bridge, so as you're going up the hill.
Okay.
I'm sorry, they, they're, it's the second bridge as you're going east.
Okay.
Eastbound lane is where the, the repair's being made.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification. Councilor Savage, would you like to make a motion then? If you, actually, any further questions or discussions on this subject? Okay?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to accept item consent agenda N.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Councilor Walker, you're good? I saw you light up there for a minute. Okay, thank you.
Yes, I'm good. Thank you.
Motion carries. Item number O, approval of change order number one for the Walupi Mountain Road Turn Lanes Project. This item is for consideration and approval of a change order to the Walupi Mountain Road Turn Lanes Project. On February 20th, 2024, council approved a contract with Desert Construction in the amount of $240,653.82 to add turn lanes at Seneca Street and Central Street. Following that approval, property owners in the area approached the city to explore coordinated improvements, allowing for a seamless roadway between Central Street and Yavapai Street. The revised design included additional improvements to Central Street to better address drainage. There will be an additional fiscal impact of $194,209.8 to the Capital Projects Fund, totaling $434,862.90, which is within the budgeted amount. Staff recommends approval. Councilor Savage.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Is this Jack? No. Mike?
Mayor, Councilman Savage.
Yes, we're excited that we're getting those turn lanes done, definitely. That's much needed on Walupi Mountain. My question is, and it's just probably because I'm not a construction guy and I don't know what seamless roadway means, I understand the drainage and everything, but it says seamless roadway. What is that?
Mayor, Councilman Savage, I, I think the idea behind this proposal was to coordinate several different projects that were going on that would add curb and gutter and sidewalk to Walupi Mountain Road, and rather than having bits and pieces and different segments of the roadway, it would all be one project to make sure that curb and gutter extended all the way through that section of Walupi Mountain Road.
Okay, so that seamless roadway you're referring to is actually Walupi itself?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mike or comment? Okay. Councilor Savage, would you, once again, would you like to make a motion on item O?
Sure, I'll make a, a motion on consent agenda, item O, to pass.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item T, Authorization to Award Contract for Street Lighting Pole Base Replacements. This item is for consideration and approval of a project to replace streetlight pole bases at very, various locations along Annie Divine Avenue and Beale Street. These replacements are necessary due to damage caused by traffic accidents. Under the proposed scope of work, using the city's job order contract, TROR will install the new pole bases, while the city will furnish and install the streetlight poles. The project will be funded by the Highway Users Revenue Fund, HERF, with a total fiscal impact of $69,947.94. Staff recommends approval. Councilor Warden?
Yeah, my question was, when, when these are damaged, don't we collect from the insurance company?
So, good evening, Mayor, Councilman Ward. So, yes, we actually prepare a invoice for the damage and the subsequent repairs, and then we share that with risk management. I'm sorry, we did with Susan, we still will with Laura, we just haven't had any that have occurred since she started with us, and then at that point, they carry those forward and try to, to receive any kind of damage funds back from those insurance companies. So, we don't necessarily see those directly, we get a check, and those will go back into the fund, but right now, we're just trying to make repairs for lights that have been damaged over the last couple of months.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the repairs. I was just wondering, the money, when it comes back, does that go into the general fund, or is it?
I would actually ask Tina on that. Typically, I would say it has came back to our HERF fund. Back, thank you. I could feel her nodding back there.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilor Warden. Any other questions for Jack? Councilor Dykens?
If RISKS sends out the request for payment from their insurance company, is there any follow-up or follow-through? If you don't hear back from an insurance company within whatever the made-up time is, is there ever follow-up to pursue it even more?
Great question. Yes, sometimes that follow actually, follow-up has actually came from the insurance companies. At times, we'll have an accident report, and we'll get a call from an insurance company saying, hey, we have a, a report from your local police department showing damage to city facilities, they'll actually reach out to us. I know in the past that RISKS would reach out to them, provide a demand letter, and then at that point, follow-through until that was either paid, or there are instances where we don't get paid, no insurance, or, you know, other reasons, I guess, but RISKS typically takes that and handles through that.
If there are no further questions, thank you, Jack. Appreciate that. Councilor Ward, would you like to make a motion approving consent agenda, item T?
I'll make a motion that we approve consent agenda, item T.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to item X. Approval Resolution Number 5573, an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with the state of Arizona for the Arizona Department of Transportation, ADOT, to issue $1.5 million in funding for the Eastern Street infrastructure improvements. With Phase 1 of the Eastern Street Improvements Project now complete, improvements from Calamet Avenue to Detroit Avenue are still needed. During Arizona's 2025 legislative session, Representative John Gillette secured $1.5 million in funding to continue this project. In order to receive the funding, Senate Bill 1737 requires the city council to enter into an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with the state of Arizona. Upon execution, the Arizona Department of Transportation, ADOT, will distribute, distribute the funds by November 1st, 2025. Staff recommends approval of Resolution Number 5573. I pulled this item just once again, I wanted to recognize our legislators that are doing work for not only our community, but also for our county, and so, Manager Walsh, would you like to add anything to that?
Thank you, Mayor. I think you covered it well. Yeah, each year, we, we work with our representative on, our representatives on important projects for the city and provide them with a, a number of projects, and thankfully to Representative Gillette, he, he saw this project, saw the need, and was able to push for it, and along with the support from Representative Biassucci and Senator Angus, we were able to get this one across the finish line, so thank you.
Great, thank you, Manager Walsh. Any questions or comments on this? Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number X on our consent agenda, approval of Resolution Number 5573.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That is it on our pulled items. Moving on to item number four, action items, item 4A, and I am at this point on item 4A. I'm going to recuse myself, and I'm going to turn the meeting over to Councilor Ward for conducting on that. Okay, thank you.
Item 4A is Authorization to Award Recycling Transport Processing Services Contract to Bulldog Disposal. As a part of the feasibility study for a possible recycling program, staff issued a formal solicitation for recycling transport processing service on January 6th, 2025, closing January 29th, 2025. The solicitation was clear that an award would not be made nor a contract be entered into until early fiscal 2026, and that it was dependent on the city council's approval to offer a recycling program. Bulldog Disposal was the only respondent. The evaluation committee scored the response and found the results to be complete and reasonable. With the recycling drop-off program approved at the May 20th, 2025 council meeting and set to launch by October 1st, a bid and contract award are now necessary. Staff recommends council award a contract for recycling transport and processing services to Bulldog Disposal.
Thank you so much, Councilman Ward, and good evening, good evening, council members. Well, it's almost been a year since the council asked staff to consider implementing some sort of recycling program, and through a long public hearing and fiscal impact analysis process, the council in late May did make the recommendation to move forward with the drop-off recycling program. So, since fiscal year 26 budget has been in place, we've been purchasing equipment, we are hiring and recruiting employees to run the program, and now we need to find a company to transport and process all of our recycled materials. As Councilman Ward shared in his summary, we did issue a formal solicitation in January, and while we did have several companies question us, show interest, Bulldog Disposal was the only company that actually submitted a response by the closing date. I do want to share that when we were putting together the fiscal impact analyses that we brought to you for consideration through the public meeting process, we did utilize this contract in doing so. So, this evening, we are asking council to consider approving that contract. I want to cover a couple of the terms within it so that you are aware. The contract is good from September 2nd, so this evening, if it is approved, through September 30th of next year, and then it would renew automatically for one-year terms unless we terminate it within, unless either party terminates it within 60 days prior to that renewal term. The contract includes the city receiving some revenues for its recycled material, and also if they are baled materials and Bulldog will be picking those up, there will be a processing fee. Now, that is, the most cost-effective method is utilizing Bulldog to pick up our materials and, and haul them to their facility, and that is, again, what we put into place and how we develop the fee that we'll be charging our customers. The total fiscal impact for this particular contract is a positive, a net positive, of about $4,700 per month. That's based on some educated guesstimates from the program we had in place in 2019 when we were processing about 300 and, or we're expecting to process about 350 tons of recycled material. Again, we'll bring back to council in about six months what this program actually, how this program is actually performing, but that's how we've based the contract and fiscal impact for now. Now, as you recall, we are charging our customers a fee for this program because this $4,700 a month does not cover the total expenses of well over $300,000 that it will take to run the program, so I just want to make, make that clear. Other than that, if, if, if there are any questions that I can answer, or I ask for you to possibly consider this for approval?
Jim, you have anything?
That was one of the issues I had that the city manager and Tina was very graciously to answer for me, and her explanation of the 4,700 per month estimated is net, my mind just went, positive fiscal impact, that included what the city makes and includes what we would be paying out to Bullhead, Bulldog Disposal, Bullhead, Bulldog Disposal. That was, that was my biggest question, was how much would we be paying out to them for their services, but that cleared it up. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Dykens.
Hey, thank you, Jim.
Hi, Tina. On the transportation, they're transporting it directly to their facility, correct? And then who picks it up from their facility, or do they take it to Vegas or other places?
Councilman Savage, that is a great question, and I do not have the answer to that question, but I know that our Soloway Superintendent is in the audience, and he may be able to respond to that.
I'm assuming that, talking with Jeremiah, they will stockhold it for a little while and then figure out what best price they can get for the commodity that we've stockpiled, they've picked up and took over there, so I think it's really going to depend on the stock market or the commodity market going up and down. Obviously, I know they won't want to hold on to it too long. That was one of our fears, is hanging on too long, you know, the fear of fire and stuff like that, but yeah, we will send it over to them, they in return will sell it to a processor.
Great. Thank you. You bet. Thank you, Tina. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item A, 4A.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Our staff keeps our conference room well stocked with snacks, and so now I have to worry about getting the Cheeto dust off my fingers. 4B, Approval Resolution Number 5569, Repeating Development Agreement dated July 16th, 2024, Establishing a New Development Agreement dated September 2nd, 2025 between the City of Kingman and High Desert Land Holdings LLC. Resolution Number 5569, Repeating Development Agreement dated July 16th, 2024, Establishing a New Development Agreement dated September 2nd, 2025 between the City of Kingman and High Desert Land Holdings LLC for the reimbursement of $300,000 for the construction of Kingman Crossing Boulevard and. Crossing Boulevard and acceptance of a property escrow trust agreement. Staff recommends approval. Jason, welcome.
Mayor Watkins, Councilor. Appreciate the time coming for you this evening. Before you tonight is a development agreement, which will actually repeal an agreement that was entered into back in 2024 and enter into a new agreement this evening with Desert Land Holdings. So, just again, the requested action is to enter into a new development agreement as well as to accept and establish the property escrow trust agreement with Pioneer Title Agency. Ultimately, this particular agreement would actually allow for the rephasing of a portion of Kingman Crossings, the subdivision that was originally approved back in 2004, came back before this council back in 2024 for revision to their preliminary plat. And as part of that, what happened is the Kingman Crossing Boulevard was actually part of a future phase. And with in speaking with the developer, they're looking to put that into Phase G and actually to move forward and to construct it in an earlier phase. Particular roadway is highlighted on the exhibit before you. So, again, this was done back in 2004. It consisted of 13 phases, 1,129 lots. In July of 16, 2024, City of Kingman entered into a trust agreement or an agreement with Pioneer Title Trust for development agreement for the reimbursement of $300,000 for the construction of Kingman Crossing Boulevard, as depicted upon that exhibit just a few moments ago, upon acceptance, completion and acceptance of it. However, since then, although the agreement was signed by by council, it was unable to be fully executed by the applicant. And that was due to additional agreements that had to be entered into with adjoining property owners. With that being the case, as they brought forward their preliminary plat, in November of 2024, there was a condition that was placed on that preliminary plat that required them to post either a cash deposit or to provide some other form of security to secure the construction of Kingman Crossing Boulevard. In spring of '25, applicant and staff had sat down. We started discussing potentially rephasing this particular plat, moving up the development of Kingman Crossing Boulevard. And in order to do so, bringing it back before you this evening. So, with that, the request before you tonight would ultimately repeal the existing agreement. It was unable to be fully executed. It requires the construction of Kingman Crossing Boulevard. It allows us to actually get it with Phase G as opposed to the original agreement would have allowed it to be constructed all the way up to Phase K and which would have been an unknown timeline for the city. With the new agreement that's being presented before you, it has already been fully executed by the applicant. So, we have that in advance of this meeting tonight. The rephasing allows for the proposed construction to take place and be completed no later than June 30th of 2027, which actually allows us to complete our circulation network for this particular area. And for the applicant, it minimizes redesign and rework for future phase development. The agreement that's been forth for you this evening does meet all the requirements. It's outlined under the Arizona revised statutes as well as the city's municipal code for development agreement. And with that, we are asking that the council this evening adopt Resolution 5569, repealing development agreement dated July 16, 2024 between Pioneer Title Agency Trust 9206 and the City of Kingman, enter into a new development agreement by and between the City of Kingman and High Desert Land Holdings LLC dated September 2nd, 2025, and to accept and establish a property escrow trust agreement with Pioneer Title Agency LLC Trust 9504 for Kingman Crossing Track 1993, Phase G. Available for any questions, as well as the applicant is here this evening.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions for Jason?
I have one.
Oh, yes, Counselor Savage.
That 300,000, Jason, is that just moving from the old agreement to the new trust?
That, yes, Mayor, Councilman Savage, yes, that is money that was already set aside in our capital improvement budget. So, we're just moving it over to the new.
Right, thank you. Okay. We also have Mr. Travon Pennington. Travon, if you'd like to come up and add some more comment, or you're good?
I have an answer.
Okay, any questions for Travon? Okay, real good. Can we have a motion then approving Resolution Number 5569?
So, move.
We have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, council. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Oh, yes.
Jason has a trip down to Phoenix. If it's possible, could we move item E up so that he could complete that and then get on the road?
Yes.
Thank you.
Let's move to item E right now then. Okay. Item 4E, presentation on commercial signage, signage opportunities, and potential for sign code amendments. Presentation on commercial signage, signage opportunities, and potential for sign code amendments. Council discretion. So, this is more like a department report, giving us more information on what we might want to do, correct?
Yes, thank you, City Manager Walsh, Mayor Council this evening. This is actually coming before you at a request, actually, from Economic Development. So, it's kind of a joint presentation. I'm going to give you really a high-level overview. Really, we're talking about some of our existing sign codes that we have already in the city, some of the things that Economic Development has brought forward as a concern that they're trying to address, and then just some opportunities. And really, just asking for the council's direction at the end as to whether or not we want to continue to implement the ordinance that we already have adopted, or do we want to come back and make a comprehensive change to it? So, real quick, our current code requirements for pole signs, right now, they are allowed along our freeways. They are allowed as well as in our industrial zones only. This was a change that went into effect in 2021 with the current code. It does limit the maximum height to 40 feet, with the exception of when it is along the freeway. And it does allow for or does provide for an abandoned sign or program within the city's sign code. If it's vacant for more than 180 days, it's deemed to be abandoned. You cannot reestablish a pole sign within the city's current code requirements. What you see before you are just examples of some pole signs that are that are existing within the city, but also other areas. Our current requirement kind of moved away from pole signs and really went to pylon signs. These are what you normally see in some of the more conventional shopping centers. This start, this particular style, again, it's more conducive to those centers. It allows for maximum heights anywhere from 40 to 60 feet, again, within our interstate corridor. And again, they're certainly much more decorative. Allows for greater tenant exposure as well. And then, our current pylon signs and what we're seeing out there, we, again, we allow for that 40 to 60 feet. What you see on the exhibit are some pole signs as well as other types of pylon signs, double pylon signs, pylon signs that are placed within planter areas. And then, we have a couple that we took pictures of, which is the Pawn World and Dollar General. And from a staff perspective, we see where these are opportunities where with our current sign program or current sign ordinance, we see that there's opportunities to improve upon aesthetics, design, things of that nature. So, we actually do encourage better sign designs for our commercial centers. Again, our I-40 corridor, currently, we have interstate corridors that are called out for Beale Street, Stockton Hill, and Andy Devine. Flying Fortress is not currently a listed corridor. It is something that we should be considering, considering the corridor itself and the interchange. We do have a couple signs that are out there, the Home to Suites. This one does go up to 60 feet. Keeping in mind the I-40 westbound, the images that are shown here, we are going to have some limited visibility as the sound walls go up along the freeway. It is going to impact our golf course as well. So, again, these are some opportunities as we're looking into this and thinking about it to really start looking at our sign code now. And again, this is kind of showing again what that looks like with those sign wall, those sound walls going in. And as a greater aspect from an economic development standpoint, also with tourism, we have a lot of historic signs throughout the city. The current sign code does not make any provisions for those historic signs. Certainly, I can tell you from a historic preservation side, we would like to see them reused and so forth. However, a lot of those are pole signs, and pole signs can't be reused under our current code. And that is something that the Economic Development Department is actually asking us to come back and put back before before the council and do an amendment to bring back pole signs to allow for the reuse of them. And again, coming back to Route 66 and being able to, again, be able to preserve some of those signs and bring back the reuse. Here's one that was preserved and refurbished and rehabbed. So, it kind of gives you an idea of what that pan looked like. And then, really, we looked at it from a staff perspective. We see opportunities as we're looking at the sign at the sign ordinances, we can bring back and we can start looking at doing comprehensive sign programs, which gives us kind of a greater blank slate when we look at regional centers. So, that's an opportunity. Again, bringing back pole or pylon signs to allow for signs in our commercial zones, the C2, C3 zones, as well as along the freeway corridors. However, in doing so and reuse of those, really starting to establish greater development standards. So, we get a better proportional width on our sign cabinets or actual pylons. And then, to either extend the abandonment period to from 180 days to make it longer to give greater opportunities, but to also enhance the aesthetics. And then, for our commercial centers, this is really just an example. When you have commercial centers that vary in size, there's opportunities where you can offer different types of signs, whether it be pylon signs combined with monument signs, depending on different frontages. It gives additional signage, different opportunities to advertise the tenants within those commercial centers. And at the same time, it actually allows us to reduce temporary signs in some of those cases. So, again, these are just thoughts, ideas that we wanted to be able to put before the council to ultimately get some direction this evening. And then, again, potentially establishing a historic sign district to really preserve some of those historic signs. So, what we're asking for this evening is direction to to have Economic Development and the city's Development Services Department work together to comprehend, to develop a comprehensive amendment to the city's sign code. In doing so, we would look at the entire code. We won't look at just one section of it, aside from temporary signs, which we're looking at currently. We'll look at the review process, the permitting process, and so forth. Or we continue to implement the current sign code as it's adopted. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions or comments for Jason?
I've got a comment.
Yes, Counselor.
In the packet that you could, not here, but the other information, I read the economic development goals. Was that who it was, not tourism? But it was a big list of their goals and wanting to improve the the signs and being able to keep a lot of the older historical signs or being able to redo those. And I really liked literally all of their goals. And my opinion is, we need to look at this and see what we can do to maintain or try to achieve all or as many of those goals as possible.
Thank you for the comment. Any other thing? Yes, Counselor Staley.
Will the Historic Preservation Commission go in and identify which signs we want to save or rehabilitate? Is that kind of the direction you're thinking this is going?
Mayor Watkins, Councilman, Councilman Staley. Yeah, as part of this, that would be my recommendation, is that we do do an inventory. So, between Economic Development and working with Historic Preservation Commission, I know that they're also working on some grants to do some other inventories as well. I think this is something that should be wrapped into it. In order to implement a program of this, you do need to inventory the signs. You have to identify which ones are eligible. Some extend over existing right-ofways, some extend over property lines. So, those may not be eligible, or you may have to, you know, look at alternatives for those, so.
Okay. I strongly support doing what we can to preserve the old historic signs. I think that's really important to our tourism economy. And I also can see potential in looking at the design standards for the other signs around town and how we can have a more cohesive look, but also allow the businesses to advertise where they're at.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything else? Counselor Ward?
Well, the only thing I would say was, we definitely want to include Flying Fortress.
Certainly.
Okay.
Because it's, you're gonna, I mean, you're gonna need signage.
We are. Of course, that'll be along the, well, yes, on the Flying Fortress Parkway. And we can make exceptions to that, too. I mean, of course, giving staff guidance, so, but good point. Counselor Savage, you want to chime in?
No.
Okay. Examples, and our manager Walsh and I were talking about this before the meeting, and I didn't realize it, but for example, the Pollo Loco, that sign is a pole sign now, but that is so close to the freeway, that does not fall within the freeway corridor?
The concern, Mayor Watkins, Council, that one actually falls into the fact that it's been abandoned for more than 180 days.
Okay.
So, that's where we're looking at, do we look at extending that, bringing back pole signs, so that way, we can.
Right.
We can reimplement the reuse of it. So, that's the reason why we can't reuse that particular sign.
And of course, that brings up another one, the Golden Corral sign. Same thing.
Correct.
Same issue. And of course, that one is not in our interstate corridor, but it has been abandoned for more than 180 days, so.
Mayor Watkins, Council, I think this is where the opportunity really lies, that as we allow for these opportunities to bring them back, that they have the opportunity to enhance the design of those signs.
Sure.
And we get a different cladding, and we get something that's much more decorative that's out there. It complements the building, it complements our commercial corridors, and it gets signage for those particular commercial entities.
But then, you also have the, which is great, Golden, I mean, not Golden Corral, but Cracker Barrel, nice, big pole sign, big double pole. But in other words, I would lean, this is my, obviously, being in business for myself and looking at costs and such, if we have an existing pole sign that is nice-looking, but we put a sign up on it and restore it, I have no problem with that. New signs, I agree. I don't, I like the monument sign, too. But on the same token, too, if I were looking at a business like the Golden Corral, I could save money as a businessman by just putting another sign up on top and keeping that pole sign as opposed to putting a monument sign in to start with. So, there's pros and cons. And of course, in the Pollo Loco one, that to me is a no-brainer. It falls along our corridor, basically, our I-40 corridor. And that one should be the way it is. But, once again, that's only my personal opinion and but my thoughts on it, so. Counsel, what do we want to do as far as, oh, yes, Counselor Savage?
You brought a point there. Now, let's say the shopping center where Pollo Loco is. Would you prefer to see a monument sign there for everybody? My concern with the pole sign is that location in particular has not had good luck keeping tenants in it.
That's true.
So, would they just change the facade of the signs? Or how's that going to work?
Mayor Watkins, Councilman Savage, I think really what it comes down to is, similar to this particular example, when you have a large commercial center and you have potential for additional signage, additional tenant space for advertising, where they can come in with a much more robust, comprehensive sign program, you get an opportunity to have a pole or a pylon sign in addition to monument signs, especially if you have multiple frontages and so forth. It really does provide maximum exposure for the tenants. So, it keeps tenants in there, it gives them maximum exposure, and it gives you a combination of both types of signs.
Thank you, Counselor. Yes, Mayor, Counselor Staley.
As I was thinking about Flying Fortress, I remembered that we are going to annex that section of the industrial park. And it seems like this is a good opportunity to think about how we want that signage to look, how it could be both directional, but also, you know, helpful for anybody that's coming in and out of the industrial park, but also modernizing kind of the look of that new section that's going to be our crown jewel. So, I would just throw that in there if there was some ways to think about the future for that.
Certainly. Mayor Watkins, Council, if I could, I think in the interest of, we are bringing forward a comprehensive amendment to the zoning code currently, knowing that there are some signs that and some users that are really pending, trying to get some signage up. The current timeline for abandoned signs probably is affecting more of those than anything. If there's the desire to make that change today, we could certainly include that into this next amendment. A comprehensive amendment to signage, that's almost a year-long process. So, as we embark upon that process, we could at least start getting this. So as we embark upon that process, we could at least start getting this one little component addressed in this next aspect. And at least, at least it will allow us to get some of those signs back into play.
I like that suggestion, too, of extending that a hundred and eighty days. And of course, obviously, engineering, in other words, the wellness or the physical stature of the sign has to be certified, I would think. Make sure it's still safe and all that kind of thing. And of course, on the same token, too, fortunately, we don't have a lot of pole signs left. In other words, some that are showed in your, in your, your examples you showed. So that being the case, it's something that we don't have to worry about too much farther going down the road. If we don't, if we limit them, that we don't, we, well, we won't allow them, is what will happen, so. So is that the way we want to go, councillor? Jason, does that give you enough to start?
That does. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councillor.
Okay. Thank you, and have a safe trip to Phoenix.
Thank you.
Okay, item number C, approval of Mojave County Flood Control District request for suspension of construction water costs for monitoring well construction. Staff has received the attached request from Mojave County Flood Control to suspend water costs for the construction of two monitoring wells in the Walupai Valley groundwater basin. The installation of these wells is of benefit to the city by offering a more accurate monitoring of groundwater elevations, providing additional data to model the aquifer. Council has identified water conservation and recharge as a priority. The construction of these monitoring wells assists in that effort. Staff recommends approval. Turn some time over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The Mojave County Flood Control has, we partnered, back up here a little bit. The city partnered with Mojave County some time back to hire USGS to create a model of the Walupai Aquifer. They did so, that, that model is out there. The county has been continuing the updates on that model, with the most recent being just this past year. And what this does here is they, they partnered with USGS as well to identify locations to place additional monitoring wells. This gives us more calibration for that model, to be able to monitor it in more detail, see if the predictions that the model is offering is matching what we're actually seeing in the, on the ground. So these two wells, one, I believe, is located out at the, at the airport. I'm not sure where the other one is, I'd have to look and see, but they've asked that the, the city's contribution basically be to not charge them for water as they're drilling these wells. So that's what the request is here.
Okay, thank you, manager Walsh. Any questions for manager Walsh on this item? Okay, seeing none, can we have a motion then approving item four C? Approval of Mojave County Flood Control District request for suspension of construction water costs for monitoring well construction.
I'll make that second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four D, Katherine Heinrich Adult Center Funding Agreement. At their July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting, the city council approved a five-year extension to, to the Katherine Heinrich Adult Center Funding Agreement. More than one council member has requested a discussion regarding the agreement, and this is council discretion. Turn some time over to manager Walsh again.
Thank you, Mayor. As mentioned, at the July fifteenth meeting, council approved the, the five-year extension of the funding agreement with the Katherine Heinrich Adult Center. Since that time, I've received a couple of requests to reconsider this, and reconsider is not the correct word, Carl will get me for that. But basically, to, to discuss the, the agenda, the, the agreement itself is not up for reconsideration, but, but basically to consider that agreement and to look towards the future, if that's something that the city would like to continue. With that, ultimately, this is a, a policy decision and, and a decision by council. So that's why it's agendized here, and, and staff is happy to answer any questions as far as the history and, and how we got to this point, as well as any other questions you might have. Thank you.
Okay. And I've also asked Mr. Ray Joyner, who is the director of the Katherine Heinrich Center, to be here tonight for any answer or any questions or comments. So, starting with councillor, any comments or questions? I know a number, a couple of you brought this up and were a little bit concerned, and so councillor Dykens.
I'll throw myself on the fire first. I was one of those council members that had some questions or issues in regards to this. Several of those questions have been somewhat answered, but I'll go through them, if that's okay. One of the things was board meetings are closed to the public, and being a nonprofit, that kind of caught me off guard. But since then, I have found that there's other nonprofits everywhere that have their board meetings closed. So scratch that, it was an issue. The contract shows that our funds are used solely to pay for two employees, but that quarterly spending reports are supposed to be submitted, and we do get those. Thank you, getting that nod before I really hurt myself. I think one of the big burrs that kind of bothered me was the fact that it is considered a nonprofit. And I guess, in this old mind or something, I feel like nonprofits should be self-sufficient, on their own, through grants or whatever. But I've also very recently found that a lot of senior centers are, receive additional funding, whether they're paid through cities or other means. So that was an issue that kind of was taken care of. I almost wish that I could go back a couple of weeks and scratch this off the agenda. But honestly, I think it's something that still is okay, just at least to discuss. I understand that our contract says that we will pay fifty-seven thousand dollars each year in the support of the program. And there are a lot of non, other nonprofit organizations in the community. But I've also found out that a lot of these other nonprofit organizations receive other funds, whether it be annual dues or other means, which I understand this location does not charge anything to anybody. Is that, is that a correct?
Correct. We have a, Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you very much, Mr. Dykens. We have a suggested donation of two dollars. And then what we've done is we've created punch cards, where you get ten punches on it, so they can buy a punch card for fifteen dollars. And anything that they want to come and do at the center, it only costs them a dollar and fifty, a dollar fifty cents. That, again, is only suggested donation. We don't ever turn anyone away. I also, too, want to thank the minor, they did a fantastic article, front page article on that for us. We have several of our senior citizens that cannot afford to pay. We don't ever turn anybody away. We get paid a lot of time in quarters. We take the quarters, you know, that just, it's, it's our operating costs. Lights, toilet paper, paper towels, to, also, too, to pay our bills, water bill, gas bill, light bill, things like that. So, but no, we don't ever turn anyone away. That center is open for anyone and everyone. We want them to come, whether they can afford to come or not, so.
And, and I want to make it clear, I have no problem with the senior center. I think it's fantastic. I think the, what it provides, community members is great.
Yes, sir.
It was just the issue of being a nonprofit that we were paying to help fund.
Correct.
But most of my issues have been extinguished. I'll use it in my, in my language, so.
It's a fire department term, isn't it, Jenny?
And Mr. Mayor and-
And I'm the one that feels very hot right now.
Well, Mr. Mayor and councillor, I do understand reservations on this topic. We, the senior citizens in this city make up about twenty-five percent of the population, so we, we are growing. I've only been the executive, proudly, the executive director for about six months, and I'm a forward thinker. And so the first thing I did is I, I thought of what programs can we bring to the center to get the senior citizens out of the house? I think COVID taught us all a lesson. You don't want to self-isolate. We have a lot of our senior citizens in this town that have lost a loved one. The first thing they want to do is they want to self-isolate, and we don't want them to do that. We want them to come to the senior center, which they gladly do. We have people telling their neighbors and their friends all the time about the center. We're growing tremendously. And it is a place to come and to be a part of a family, and we, and we drill our family. Even though we are a nonprofit, I feel like we're a, a nonprofit in a league of our own. Being a forward thinker, too, I'm always thinking of ways to save money. I have a list of groups that come, and we don't charge them anything to be in our building. We hold the Republican Forum Meeting, the Daughters of the American Revolution. We support many businesses in this town and many groups in this town. We're also, too, looking at ways to make money. We have a small commercial kitchen. We started doing dinners for our seniors. It's only ten dollars. They can come on Friday night and they can have dinner. They can get dressed up, give them a place to go. We've also been approached by a gentleman who just got a grant from the state of Arizona to help entrepreneurs. It's a twelve-week program to help entrepreneurs go from the farmer's market to actually putting their products out there for sale, but they need to be done in a commercial kitchen. So we're gonna rent our commercial kitchen out to them, and we're gonna make money that way. So we're always looking at ways to make money, and I've got a whole list of, of, of things to do to make money. So we rent our rooms out for celebration of life parties. We just had a celebration of life. We rented that room out. I had the, the couple that lost their brother, they came to me, and now their family wants to rent the building again in November and do their family reunion there in the building. So we're always looking at ways to make money that we can on our own. But again, without the, the help of the city, it's just the, the costs to, to run the Katherine Heinrich. And it's been around for over fifty years, was built in nineteen seventy-two. So and our mission is basically to give people a place to come, where that they can be amongst people and not set at home and self-isolate, but be a part of a community. We're bringing the seniors out to the center. As soon as they're through, where are they going? They're going to Marshall's to go shopping, they're gonna run over to Culver's to grab something to eat. If we don't get them out of their house, they will just take their money and they'll fix their backyard up with a nice, beautiful outdoor kitchen, and that's exactly where they'll stay, and we want them to be out in the city and in the community. We're working with Bill Street Theater right now, too. Amazing, wonderful renovation on that theater. So we, we actually, once their, one of their productions was over Shrek here recently, I asked to bring it to the center. So we sold eighty tickets for that, and we gave that money right back to Bill Street Theater, because that money goes for scholarships for those kids. So we're planning with Bill Street Theater to bring more shows after they've been in production. We're telling all of our seniors, go to the theater, two hundred and ninety-seven beautiful seats. You want to go and support the theater. Once those productions are done, we're trying to bring them to the center as well, and then make, and then give that money back, too. So we're working hand in hand with the community every single day. And again, without, I really do believe, I think we're in a league of our own, our nonprofit without that, our seniors would have no place to go. We're getting a lot of people moving here. I moved here in two thousand and fifteen, and I want to say thank you. Kingman is turning into the new Sun City West. I mean, it's fantastic. The downtown, it's fabulous. We've got a lot of new people moving here, and the first thing they do when they move here is they say, I'm from Washington, or I'm from Phoenix. And, you know, our, our senior center is great, and this and that, and what do you guys offer? So, so we're telling them, and, and they're coming because we offer a lot to do. And, and again, like I said, but that's a seven-day-a-week. I did take today off. I had to. I've been working for about six months now with about four days off, but I love what I do, and I love our seniors. And again, you know, I, I think it was brought up before, in the past. And I think the room was filled with two hundred and something seniors, and you may have had to use your gavel for that, Mr. Mayor. So, but I didn't want to do that, because that's not what this meeting is about. It's just, you guys want to know why, and I'm just basically explaining to you. It's a very, very important, we're also a safe, we've got people coming, groups coming to our building. The Girl Scouts, the Cancer Care Unit, all these groups meet at our place because we're safe. We have one entrance, we have cameras, we have monitors, and we're very tight security. We'll never have, pray to, pray to God, an issue where a gentleman walks in and stabs eleven people. So we, they feel safe while they're there. We're alcohol-free, we're smoke-free. So they can come, and it's a safe place for them to just enjoy themselves and enjoy each other. And we watch the front door, we watch the cameras, and we want them to feel safe while we're there. So I really feel like we're a very, very big, vital part of this city and growing this city as well, so. And you can follow us on kingmanseniors.com and see all the wonderful things that we're doing, yes.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you for your reservation, sir.
Any other comments or questions or discussion on this item? Councillor Savage, we're all good? Yes, councillor, yes, councillor Sealy.
I want to thank you for coming here tonight and for the work that you're doing. I've served on a couple of different nonprofits in Kingman, and I know it's really hard to make ends meet because grants don't pay for everything, and you're fundraising, or you're, you're trying to get the community to support you, and, and the stress of always trying to keep the doors open, knowing what it means to so many people. So I just want you to know that you have my support. My grandparents used to go to the senior center when they were alive, and their friends did, and it just has meant a lot to our community. So I know the important work that you do, and I just think, while you're here, could you tell us a little bit about how many people you serve in the senior population? And what are some of the really important programs that you provide?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councillor woman, thank you. We, right now, are growing. Mr. Mayor called me a couple of weeks ago, because we do hold the Republican Forum Meeting there, and he was gonna make a presentation, want to make sure that we had the projection. And I think at the time, you said you have over fifty cars in your parking lot. So we have actually been growing. You came on Tuesday, which is bingo. So we do karaoke every Monday, we do bingo every Tuesday. We're up to about forty-five to fifty people for karaoke. We're up to about sixty people now that come and play bingo. And we play bingo for prizes, not for cash, so, and we have just been inundated with prizes. People are just cleaning out their closets, they're cleaning out their spare rooms, and they're just bringing us, and we have actually so, so much of an inventory. I've been working with the Nutrition Center next door, and they used to have a, they used to have a shop there that was kind of like a thrift store. So I'm talking with them about maybe opening, using our annex, one of the rooms in our annex building, and opening another thrift store, and splitting the, the proceeds with the Nutrition Center, because we work hand in hand with them every single day. Matter of fact, I eat lunch over there every single day for five dollars, and if it wasn't for them, I wouldn't get any fruits and vegetables in me at all. So I really appreciate our Nutrition Center, and they are absolutely amazing. So they had had a thrift store before, it was where the voting room was, and now that's actually been turned into their office. So I said, well, we can, we can use one of our rooms. But yes, you are right, we're, we're growing. We see probably, we're seeing now sixty, I would say sixty people on a daily basis, sixty to a hundred people on a daily basis. We have exercise classes, Tai Chi, five days a week. When you go on to kingmanseniors.com, look at our schedule, we do all kinds of exercise classes. We teach line dance five nights a week. We now are square dancing on Monday nights. Years ago, there was the Kingman Cut Ups Square Dance Group, and then they disbanded, and they haven't had that. So when I came back in, I said the first thing I'd like to do is, would be bring square dance back. So we've been square dancing now for about two months, and we are the, for KH, for Katherine Heinrich. We are the cadiddle hoppers. I'm still not really sure what a cadiddle hopper is, but they wanted to use the Katherine Heinrich initial. So, but anyway, but we keep, we keep our seniors moving, singing. I do believe that the secret to longevity is to keep moving, cognitive. We have card games, we play pinochle. I mean, we just have an entire list. And then we have brought in entertainment as well. So I can tell you right now, I appreciate your comment. I don't worry as much at night when I put my head on the pillow because of the funding that we get from you. And I want to let you know that how important that really is, because without it, it would be a whole different direction that I would have to go. And again, my philosophy is these are our golden years. We're supposed to be enjoying these years. We've all worked very hard, you're still working very, very hard, but when you get ready to retire, you also want to have a place that you can go and enjoy yourself. And so I will, as long as I am in Kingman, and I plan to never leave Kingman, I will always make sure that that center is open some way, somehow, to have our seniors enjoy their golden years and have fun, so. Thank you.
Okay, yes, councillor.
I appreciate the detailed explanation of everything.
Yes, sir.
But I more appreciate the fact you didn't bring out the troops.
And again, I did not want to, I did not want to do that. I, I heard the story, and I said, no, that is not the way. Again, you're not, you're not disputing the funding, you're just, you have reservations, and I understand completely. You want to know where is the money going, and I can tell you right now, every single dollar. I, I did not bring on a maintenance guy. We lost our maintenance guy about five months ago. Mr. Rex passed away after eighteen years of being at the Katherine Heinrich, because I can do the maintenance, so we're saving money there. I'm always thinking of ways to save money. We don't pay for cleaning, we clean the building ourselves. I'm there at five o'clock in the morning a lot, and I'll see the county guy leaving from cleaning next door at the Nutrition Center, but we clean our own facility. We've got enough volunteers to do that. So again, like I said, I'm always thinking of ways to make money and to save money, so that your money is very, very well spent. And I, and I do mean that, and I always will as executive director, and I don't plan on leaving there ever either, so.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, councillor? And Ray, once again, appreciate you being here and being-
Yes, sir.
-available to answer all the questions. -available to answer all the questions. Manager Walsh and I were talking about this a little bit history-wise and I think we concluded that back in two thousand thirteen, actually, the city used to run the Katherine Heinrich Center.
I, yeah, I love that your name is on the top of our sign. Yes, sir.
So, well, we'll thank you for keeping it there. Tim, do you, is there anything more you wanna add to that just briefly history-wise? I know you talked about the very first time when we approved this, but just, uh, it, it's an interesting history and why we continue to support the Katherine Heinrich Center.
You know, I, I, I think Ray's done an excellent job of explaining what they do there. Um, just to, to give a brief history, um, and I could probably call Mike up to give a better story here. He knows it a lot better than I do. Um, but I, I'll, I'll give you a brief one. If you'd like more, Mike can, Mike can help me out here. Um, but initially, the, the, the program was started in nineteen sixty-eight under the Older America Act. Um, ultimately, ultimately that, the funding left on that. Um, and then the city and the county partnered together to, to continue the program forward. Um, and a, as you mentioned, the, the city staffed the, the, the site. It was a, a collaboration with the county. The city staffed some, sounds like the county staffed some. And then, uh, in, basically in two thousand thirteen, uh, we looked at it and, and said that, you know, we, we could provide the funding and then that would be our, our contribution rather than providing the staffing to it. And they've continued since, so.
And tried to streamline a little bit and actually I think it gives you a little more freedom to do what you're doing.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Yes, Mr. Mayor, it does. And again, having the seniors there, they will go out and spend money in the city afterwards. Otherwise, they will be little hermits and they will stay in their house and they won't go out at all. So, uh, but anyway, that's the whole thing is to get them to the center and then to let them have fun. And then, um, we always, we're always saying downtown. Downtown is beautiful. Appreciate very, very much everything that you guys have done for that. Cause I came in two thousand fifteen. Matter of fact, I walked into the Beale Street Theater when it was a junk, I'm sorry, sorry, I say junk store, uh, an antique store. And I said then at that time, it needed to be a theater again. So, I'm just very, very happy with downtown, so. And we're, we're continuing to tell our seniors to go downtown and spend some time downtown. We're also a member of the Chamber of Commerce and we love being a member of the Chamber and working with the Chamber, so. Thank you, sir.
Well, and Ray too. I know Counsel, I would invite each of us. I've already been there a number of times, but just to stop by and say hi to the, to, um, to Ray and his staff and they're very friendly. And I'm try, I try to hide, I mean, be low-key and Ray won't let that happen. He'll introduce you as, as city council and-
Oh, yes.
The people are very, all the seniors are very appreciative-
Yeah.
To say hi and thanks. And so, it's just an amazing program.
Yeah, Mr. Smiley's been there as well, for sure. But thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it very much. And again, we always say again, you guys are the ones that are making this city great. So, we thank you very much for that.
Well, thank you, Ray. Okay, I think there's no action on this item. I think we are good where we're at then.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ray. Appreciate it. Okay. Thank you. Item number, I think we're all, we're done, almost. Item number five, announcements by Mayor, council members and city manager. Turn some time over to Manager Walsh.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, I'd like to, uh, introduce our, our new Public Works Director, Jamie Carrery. Come on up. Jamie started just last week with us and is hitting the ground running. He's doing a great job out there. Um, I'll let you go through your history. He, he's, uh, got a number of years as a Public Works Director. Has also worked a little bit on the private side as well and, and brings a whole lot of knowledge and, and experience to us. Go ahead, Jamie.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome, Jamie.
Hello. Um, my name is Jamie Carrery. Uh, I come from the East Coast. Um, I was born and raised in Brooklyn, New York and, um, I'm a little nervous. I apologize. When I saw that this position was open, I was excited after I did some research on the projects and, um, the funding. And then, when I met city manager, deputy city manager and the city engineer during my interview, I was pleasantly surprised. Usually you can tell when, um, some was not true to who they are and it came out immediately that that was not the case. And then, when I took the position and I started working last week, it was immediate. The, the welcome that I received from everybody, from my staff, I mean, just, you know, you guys know Jack very well. To walk into something right on the back of an award from the APWA is pretty impressive. So, I'm super grateful. I'm super blessed. A little bit on my history. Uh, I was born in Brooklyn, raised in upstate New York and, uh, I played football since I'm a little kid. I've always been quarterback, kinda leader end of it and it's always been something that's come natural to me. Being able to mold and shape people is one of, or one of the things that I love to do the best. I went right out of high school and went right into the military. Um, I joined the Air Force and I was stationed in Texas in Germany where both of my children were born. I have two sons. And they're both now, not so little, thirty-two and twenty-eight. Uh, my oldest son, uh, Mitchell, he is a, uh, he works for the federal government and my youngest son is a backseater for F-eighteen out of, um, uh, Fresno area, Lemoore. So, very proud and they actually gave me two beautiful grandsons. So, I now have a ten-month-old, um, Carson and a five-month-old, Diego. And, uh, they, they have changed everything about me, but. I, I've, as, uh, city manager said, I've been a Public Works Director, um, back east in PA and then I was Public Works Director for two years in Boulder City. I tried a little bit on the private side and, uh, the education was overwhelming. I, I, I believe that if you ever really wanna go public, you go private first, you're gonna be tenfold better. Uh, the, the private side, it is a crash course on whatever it is you're working on. And it has to be done. It has to be done right. It has to be done now and you have to commit within budget. So, it actually made me sharpen up, uh, my toolsets for coming here. So, I had actually said to one of my dearest friends, is he took over my position in Boulder City as Public Works Director, Gary Poindexter. I'd said to him, "The next city that I go to work for is really gonna benefit from my time in the private." And I'm very thankful that it happens to be here. So, there's a little bit on what I bring, where I come from. I'm very direct. I'm very honest. I, to a fault sometimes, um, but I will always be, uh, a transparent, um, leader. Uh, I'm an open book. You can ask me anything unless city manager says, "No, um, keep your mouth shut." But, uh, uh, everything else, um, ask. Uh, I'm always there. I'm always, uh, available. My staff knows. They can come to me and talk to me, uh, anything. I'm not scared. You're not gonna hurt my feelings. I have broad shoulders. There's a lot of things I've been through in my life. I mean, I've even had a nightclub for five years, so there's a lot of things. I don't even think city manager knew that. But, you know, there's a lot of things that my mother always told us, you can only do, um, what you limit yourself not to. So, if you wanna be able to do something, you just do it. You learn it and you just do it. Put your best foot forward. So, with that, I'm open to questions if-
Well, Jamie, welcome to the team and since you are up here in the hot seat.
Sure.
Uh, Counsel, any questions for Jamie?
Thank you.
Yes, Counsel Savage?
Hi, Jamie. Welcome. I just wanna start off by saying welcome.
Thank you.
And I never met a New Yorker that wasn't direct.
Same.
So, welcome. I appreciate that.
There was a, a word that my mother, it was a joke. My parents taught us a word when we were first born and I can't say it up here, so.
Okay. Thanks again.
Thank you. I appreciate your time and I look forward to a lot of things together.
Great. We will be seeing you, I'm sure. Okay, Counsel Savage. Actually, Counsel Walker. We'll pick on you, Keith. Do you have anything for tonight?
No, I'm good. I appreciate it.
Okay.
And welcome, Jamie.
We miss you being here, but we hope you continue to heal.
I like the elbow room.
Thank you.
Thanks, Keith. Counsel Savage?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Counsel Ward? Counsel Staley? Counsel Dykens?
Nothing.
Okay. Uh, we do, just as a reminder, I want to remind everybody, this Friday is First Friday Downtown and you know the success that we have been having downtown, uh, on Beale Street and, uh, our Chamber of Commerce is doing a great job. And actually, they are having a co- cowboy carnival with live music, specials, roller skating, games, food, and of course trucks and vendors. Um, several, and of course, a number of shops will be open later than normal. So, uh, anyway, uh, lots of good stuff. Oh, I guess the Beale Street Theater is having a talent show. Is your daughter involved with that, Counsel Staley?
Not this one.
Not this one? Okay. Anyway, once again, we have a great downtown. Please come down on First Friday and visit. Also, then September eleventh and fourth through the fourteenth, the Mojave County Fair at the Fairgrounds. And, uh, that's a huge event to see some of the different businesses and I know the city's gonna have a booth there. And I'm back, Counsel, have you, have you been invited to be on the booth? I'm sure some of us have already, if not all of us. So, anyway, that should be a fun time and we'll get to see a lot of, of good people that visit that county fair. Um, once again, I appreciate and can't thank enough, uh, the service that is given in our community. It's always just an amazing thing, uh, to see the good that is happening in our community and what it, what it makes, how it makes our community. And I thank you all for it. Item number, last item, uh, Counsel Six requests, Counsel requests for future reports and updates. Counsel Dykens and then, nothing? Counsel, Counsel Dykens?
Uh, two things, actually. Uh, I'd like a report of some form dealing with state land and availability. Uh, I, I, one of the classes I attended at, at the conference was, uh, on state land and benefits on purchasing some of that for the community. So, I'd like that as one issue. And then, here I'm throwing my both feet into it. Water use with city buildings. It was, it was shared that we're spending almost thirty-five thousand a year on water bills on just a few of our buildings. But what I would like is to find out what our bills are if, because there's no way that we're spending thirty-five thousand dollars on grass, watering grass. There's going to be a water bill for each of the buildings anyways and I'd like to see what the comparison is of what a standard water bill would be versus-
Well, bathrooms, sinks, toilets, kitchens, that kinda stuff as opposed to just grass.
Correct.
Okay. Manager Walsh has heard. Okay. Anything else?
Yeah.
Counsel Ward?
I'd like to see a report on the average time it takes to get a water leak repaired, from the time it's reported to the time it's repaired, as well as follow-up on. A while back, we agreed that if we had to dig it up the second time, we were gonna replace the line. We've not been doing that. We, we need to know why and, and address it.
Okay.
New heat is a good example, three, four, five in a row. And it's, that's just one street and they're all in the town. I realize we have-
Counselor Ward, Counselor Ward, can you please turn your mic on?
Okay.
Thank you.
It's on now, Ann.
Okay.
Okay.
I, those are, those are, yeah, very worthwhile reports. Anything else? Count, count, vice, yes, Manager Walsh.
Just wanna make sure, we do have an executive session, so.
Yes, I know.
Okay, okay.
I know. I forgot that. So, everything else? We're good as far as requests? Okay. We do have one more item. Item number seven, executive session, seven A. Executive session to discuss legal options regarding the transaction privilege tax. Staff request that Counsel go into executive session pursuant to ARS thirty-eight dash four thirty-one point zero three A-three to discuss legal options regarding the transaction privilege tax, discussion and possible action. Uh, so we're going, can we have a motion to, for the Counsel to go into executive session? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. All those favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're going into executive session and we would like to thank anybody, all of you for being here in council chambers tonight. We appreciate your time. Hey, Keith. We can see you now.
Is that the presidential office?
What's that?
Is that the presidential office?
Yes, it is. Actually, it's the Vice President.
Oh.
Mindy's the President. I'm the Vice President.
Okay, we are back from executive session and, uh, no action has been taken, so we are adjourned. Thanks again for everybody being here.